Commissioner.
Commission, good evening. We do have a quorum of the City of Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission. However, tonight, our regular chairman and vice chair are both not able to attend this special meeting of the commission. So, our very first action item tonight is to call the meeting to order, which I just did. And then, I need, we need you all to nominate a commission member to act as the chairman for this evening.
I nominate Commissioner Maloney to serve as chairperson of this meeting.
Second.
So, we need a vote?
All in favor?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same say.
Thank you. So, Chairperson Maloney is going to run the meeting from here on out. So, thank you.
Good evening, all. I wish you could join me and salute President of the Allegiance of the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the secretary note the role?
Commissioner Kish is present. Commissioner Keys is present. Commissioner Maloney is present. Commissioner Walters is present. Commissioner Steiner is present. Chairman Bray is absent, and Vice Chairman Barnes is absent. Commissioner Maloney, we have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, a vote shall be taken to excuse the members unable to attend due to extenuating circumstances. Do I hear a motion to excuse Chairman Bray and Vice Chairman Barnes?
I move that we excuse Chairman Bray and Vice Chairman Barnes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'd like to approve the draft minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held on September 12th, 2018. Are there any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve that, those minutes?
Ms. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes from the September 12th meeting.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Now is the time for all citizens who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on any unknown agenda items. Are there any speaker cards? Good. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on a non-agenda item at all? If there are no speakers, the commission will listen to comments and may take one of the following: respond to criticism, request a staff investigation, and report on the matter; request that the manner be rescheduled for further adjournment. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The buzzer will let you know you have 30 seconds left to speak. Before you begin to speak, please identify yourself clearly by stating for the record your name and address. This is an opportunity for commission members to disclose any ex parte communications that they have had prior to this meeting on any items scheduled for discussion on this agenda. Is there any?
No.
No.
Old business? We have no old business. New business? We would like to begin?
A point of order. The old business is the Rainbow Valley.
Oh, sorry. The old business is continuing public hearing for 07-200-00323, Rainbow Valley, final planned area. And Karen, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, one second. Can you open up the public hearing?
Yes. Public hearing is on.
There. Thank you very much.
It's already.
And once again, thank you all for being here tonight. It's very much appreciated. This is the big picture location of the property. It's approximately 12 miles south of the I-10. It's a quarter mile southwest of Cantomea, which is... Which is... Where's my clicker? Oh, there we go, sorry. Right there is Cantomea. So, it's a quarter mile southwest of that, and it's on the edge of the Goodyear Planning Area. It's approximately 1,000 acres, and this is drilling down to the subject property. It's on the west side of Rainbow Valley Road. It's an eighth of a mile south of the Willis Road Water Campus, the city's water campus, and it's bisected by the Waterman Wash, going right through here. They are proposing three low-density residential categories and one medium-density residential category. There will be a maximum of 2,962 units developed on the property. They will have 42 acres of commercial, and that will develop per the city's C-2 regulations. They will have their own residential development standards, but the commercial will develop per the city's regulations. And there will be 113 acres of park and open space, and a lot of that is the development of the Waterman Wash. And there's also an elementary school site right here in the blue. And these are the land development regulations for the LDR, Low Density Residential Categories. As you can see, they follow the city's, or similar to the city's, R-17 and R-16 zoning districts, and they have minimum lot areas of 7,000, 6,000, and 4,500 square feet. And for those smaller lots, the lots that are less than 55 feet wide, they will be providing an amenity to support those smaller lots. As you know, we did that with our own zoning districts. And they will have either a community center, an aquatic center, or splash pad complex. And that will develop at the same time as the second enhanced neighborhood park that they are developing in this, in this project. And I'll show you where that, where that's going to be. These are the medium-density residential development standards that they will be following on approximately 44 acres. And the R-2, the R-1A, and the R-1C, again, follow our underlying zoning, our zoning districts that we have in our zoning ordinance. The R-2 is two-family residential. The R-1A is single-family attached, and the R-1C is a court home product. Proposed within their open space and trails plan is significant enhancements to Waterman Wash. And in the applicant's presentation, they have a lot of exhibits that will show you these open space amenities and these park amenities in much more detail. The Wash will be connected to the regional trail system down at the southeast quarter of the development. There'll be a trailhead there so that you can walk from within the development along the Wash and then continue onto the regional trail system. They'll have 11 neighborhood parks, and three of those will be enhanced, and that's shown with the blue asterisks. And this is the second one that I referred to. When that gets developed, then that other amenity to provide open space and activities for the smaller lots will develop as well. And then, there are trail systems throughout this development that will connect from parcel to parcel and parcel to park and park to the Wash. And in terms of the enhanced neighborhood parks, in addition to all of the normal park amenities that you will find in these enhanced ones, there will be restroom facilities as well as sports fields. And again, it's to provide, you know, amenities that are connected throughout the development and can be accessed by everyone within the community. And, you know, as you can see from the location maps, this is pretty far south, and it's outside of any of the current service areas that the city has. So, how, how we handle the city being able to provide services for this property is through a development agreement. And that's on a separate track from the PAD. It doesn't get presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but it ultimately goes to the city council with the rezone. And within that development agreement, it establishes the financial obligations for the owner to allow for the provision of city services. And in that agreement, it establishes that the owner purchases all capital equipment, that the owner designs, installs, and constructs all public infrastructure related to roadway construction and signalization, related to fire station construction, related to water and sewer extension, infrastructure extension, if it's going to be a city water system. Or if not a city water system, it could be a private water and sewer system. But regardless of which one, the property owner is, is responsible for the costs and also for the park and open space development. The PAD is in conformance with the general plan neighborhoods designation on the property. It is in conformance with the zoning ordinance requirements for rezone. And we believe that together with the property owner and his team, we have worked out a PAD and development standards that, that can be supported by staff and administered by staff. And the PAD is also in conformance with the city's parks master plan. And so, we are recommending approval, subject to the stipulations that are in the ordinance contained in your packet. And I will tell you, between now and when the PAD goes to the city council on October 22nd, we still have to do some wordsmithing on some of the stipulations related to the development agreement, the specific financial obligations related to the development agreement. But in terms of all the stipulations that are related to land use, they will stay as are presented to you tonight in the ordinance. We ask that you make a recommendation to the council on the, on the PAD before you tonight. And I have, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is also here with a presentation as well.
Can you tell me a little bit about the side yards and the, I see that they're five foot, are they five foot from the wall to the house?
They are, excuse me, they are five feet on either side of the house. From the wall of the house to the side property line, it is five feet. So, in between the homes, you will have 10 feet.
Karen, who, who is responsible for Rainbow Valley Road improvements leading up to this community?
It will be, the applicant will be responsible for off-site improvements to get to the property.
So, yeah, you're, yes. So, Mr. Chairman, or Ms. Chairman and Commissioner, the, the development agreement that's been negotiated with various members of city staff and the owner and his team specifies the different obligations that relates to not only signalization internally and roadway improvements external of the project as well. So, there's got to be two ways in and out of the project for fire safety, life safety access. So, Rainbow Valley Road would be improved to Willis, if I remember off the top of my head, and then Jermaine Road will also act as a east-west, or life safety secondary point of access for the project. So, there's various, there's a whole section in the development agreement that the council's going to consider that relates to obligations for infrastructure improvements that are off of the premises.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, for the record. Bill Lally with Tiffany and Bosco representing the applicant tonight. Address is 2525 East Calumback Road in Phoenix. I wanted to first start off, Karen did a great job of giving an overall synopsis of the project. I'll drill down a little bit on some of the open space because we've got some pictures that were in the PAD. But I wanted to kind of just rewind a little bit and thank Karen and Chris and, and the team here tonight because we've been at this project since '09. So, Mike Merriman, who's here with me tonight, the owner of the project, has owned the property since 2005. Obviously, a lot of things happened in the last downturn, but filed the original case in 2009, worked on a lot of water quality, water assurance issues for a number of years, and then restarted the project a few years ago. So, really has been at it for almost 10 years on this project, put a lot of time, energy into it. When we restarted the project a few years ago, we, we had a number of meetings with every department in the team, in the, in the city, and really sat down and talked about all of the needs, not just a typical zoning case coming in with a mixture of uses of, of residential and commercial and parks and schools and churches and that sort of thing. It was, it was a very collaborative effort, a room full of people. Every department was in there. Every department was represented. Your policymakers and elected officials were, were involved early on in the process to make sure that they spelled out what they needed from us. And so, it took about a year or more to get through to where we are today. A lot was talked about with the development agreement. We've actually spent, good or bad, the la, the last, since May, every single week down here at City Hall with Sarah and Chris and sometimes Katie and sometimes various members of all of the departments in this, in the city. They're probably sick of us by now, but every week, we're down here meeting with, with senior staff, negotiating every element of the development to make sure that when a project this size, 1,000 acres, comes to an area that doesn't already have all the infrastructure, it's not an infill, it's not up by I-10, that we, that we're talking about every single thing, that we're not leaving everything out. So, every single week for the last three or four months, multiple hours to come to where we are tonight with a development agreement that I think, as was indicated, is, just needs to be fine-tuned over the next week or so. The stipulations that you see here are pretty robust. I think they represent many of the infrastructure questions, you know, that were asked. And so, what I'd like to do is at least publicly thank them for all of their time. I think they went above and beyond in many, many areas to, to get us where we are here tonight. So, we're very excited to be here. But again, Karen did such a great job going through many of the facets and details of the project. I'm not going to reiterate. I'm going to probably quickly go through some of these exhibits and, and get to the heart of the matter. You know, this is that overall land plan. When you have 1,000 acres and it's set aside from any other large master plan community, you want to have a diversity of housing. And so, what we really try to do is better understand what are the new home buyers' demographics? People who want to be in Goodyear, people that want to be in the West Valley, people that want to be in this, this picturesque Rainbow Valley area. What are their needs? And talking to the home builders, what do home buyers want? And so, we really try to design a diversity of housing throughout the 1,000 acres to make sure that it isn't just one size or one type, that there's a lot of diversity. You see, you have the future 303 coming through. You have a large Wash coming through. You have a power line or a southwest gas line that coes, bisects the property. So, there's a lot of things to work around, but we really looked at those as opportunities for amenities. As you can see, the large Wash coming through, staff indicated that that was an opportunity for us to enhance the open space. A lot of the parks are connected through the easements near other open space. And again, let me walk you through sort of, again, here's the connectivity that Karen was talking about. When we sat down, again, it'd been about 10 years, the city had adopted their, a new Parks and Open Space Master Plan. So, what we really had to do is take all of those elements of the Parks and Open Space Master Plan and apply it to this land plan that'd kind of been out there for about 10 years, and really made a lot of changes and reworked a lot of things to make sure that it met all of the new policies and goals that you and the city council have designed and, and put forth to the community. These are a little bit of the details. As you talk about, I'm a father of four, so we're a big soccer family. So, when I saw the fact that we're going to have soccer parks within the development that is near and dear to my heart, it seems to be, you know, for little ones anyways, kind of the fastest growing sport in the valley. This is a, a program of a park that is in the PAD, so these exhibits are PAD exhibits. But more importantly, there's 50-plus pages of PAD text that holds us to the details and accountability of what needs to be in those. In addition to, there's, there is a development agreement that, again, identifies improvements that are over and above what would normally be required in a, in a city park or a subdivision park. And, and that's the trade-off. When you come in and you want some smaller lots and you want to have diversity of housing, you're going to have some components of smaller lots to, to meet that buyer demand. They're not going to be in their backyard all the time. So, you have to have these well amenitized regional and neighborhood parks. Again, as you can see, every park, seven acres, 11 acres, they're all amenitized. This is not just a big desert area with, with hopefully, you know, a park bench. We've really gone above and beyond to make sure that we're meeting the design guidelines that the city's asking for. Little close-up gives you an understanding of the level of detail over the last year and a half that we've tried to instill into the PAD and is replicated in the, in the development agreement. This is a cross-section. Again, when, when we had the gas line, we look at it as an opportunity to not have it as a closed-off area where no one can go, no one can touch, but have it as an open space amenity that connects the community together. Even though the gas line easement's 30 feet, what we tried to do is make it very, very wide, accessible, and make it an amenity. In addition, the large Waterman Wash. I mean, again, it could be a constraint for a development because you've got to build bridges, expensive bridges over it. You've got to work around the four or four issues and the core of engineer issues. We look at it as an amenity. As you can see, the cross-section there has a very large setback on each side of 75 additional feet. Again, another item negotiated into the development agreement where the minimum is much less than that per the city standard or even the new open space code. But working with staff, we understood that it was important to make sure that we had large buffers on both sides of the Wash. So, this is, is a true amenity to the community. Again, as you, as you develop in an area that doesn't have public facilities right next door, you have to look at, see what's in the area. This gives you an understanding of, of public facilities in the area. Fire service was always an issue that's been talked about from day one. A new fire station will be built just to the north of here on Willis Road. This gives you an understanding, on the, on the right-hand side is a fire service response map produced by the city that will show that the new fire station 186, as built, when applied, will be within the four-to-six-minute response time. And that's important. That's very, very important when you have a, a development that could be partially single-family, maybe even partially age-targeted or age-restricted. We want to make sure that public facilities are planned and designed ahead of time. The development agreement walks through certain trigger points that even if this station doesn't accommodate the growth, new station, new facilities would have to be paid for by the developer. He's been at it for about 10 years. We've, we've embraced the developer pays-for-growth concept. The development agreement is a very robust set of promises that goes along with this PAD. We're very happy to be here, here, Madam Chair and Commissioners, with staff approval. Took a couple of years to, to get us where we are today and be happy to answer any questions.
I do have two concerns.
Yes.
My first concern is the parcels 1A, parcel 2, and parcel, I think that's 6, or is that 5? The ones next to the future 303. So, we're looking at putting residential properties around a high, high-density freeway someday. I know it's not there yet, but the reality is that's going to be a, you know, you know, possible noise and noise issue, and I've lived by a freeway for 14 years and it's not fun. Is there a reason why parks or other, that land wasn't made into the parks in that area as opposed to residential?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, there's, there's a number of reasons, and I'm going to also introduce the fact that we have a whole team of land planners and engineers behind me, that if I get this wrong, I'm, I'm probably going to hear about it. So, watch for a hand back there if they need to come up. So, you're right, living next to a freeway, most of the freeways in town have been established and then residents come to the freeway. You know, that's, that's been sort of the practice. And, and the freeways there, the homes get built up against the freeway. Maybe there's a sound wall, maybe there isn't a sound wall. The difference here in this situation, I'll give, I'll make two points, which is that we have the opportunity, because we do, we think it's an amenity, having a freeway come and, and kind of bisecting the northern parcel, part of our property, provides an opportunity for some higher density and, and non-residential areas. But what it also allows us to do is, is carefully analyze the buffering. So, when we are designing single-family adjacent to the freeway corridor, during this process, we've had a number of conversations with staff about the buffering. And so, we're not going to leave it to ADOT to design within ADOTs right away how to work within our subdivision. We're going to do that ahead of time. Now, additionally, the parks question. So, when you look at compatible uses, freeway, single-family homes, what we try to do is put the most intensity, the higher density, the non-residential near the freeway. You see that more often throughout the valley. But additionally, if we put all of our open space, parks on the north side or of the development adjacent to the freeway, you then leave out the opportunity to have regional walkable parks from all parts of the subdivision. So, at some point, you've got to have pieces of parks and parks broken out throughout the subdivision. So, the folks say, down in 19C, don't have to get in their car and drive up to, let's say, a 50-acre park up north because they have a seven-acre park that they can get on their bikes with their family and just go down the street to. And so, it's not as simply, when you're designing a, a community, sometimes it's not as simple as saying, well, you got a freeway, let's put a bunch of stuff in between the homes and the freeway, because we want to make sure that it's a community and the open space and parks are used by everybody. So, I think we've done a good job with the buffers. I think we've done a good job with the more compatible, higher-density residential and non, you know, the commercial resident, you know, commercial land uses, but then distributed the open space throughout the, the development. Ron, did I get that right? 80-foot minimum buffer along, and that's, 80-foot minimum buffer is from the ADOT right-of-way. So, as you know, travel lanes of a freeway aren't right on the right-of-ways. There's always going to be, I don't want to say a number, but there's usually 100 or more feet depending on the grade of the freeway. If you go to some freeways in the area, on the south side, if there's a grade, you're going to have a large retention base. So, on our side, you have 80 feet before you get to maybe, you know, the, the first home, wall, back wall, most likely. And then, on the other side of the 80 feet, you're going to have probably a sound wall and probably another 100 or more feet before you get to travel lanes. And I don't know the grade separation there, and that's always going to be, you know, if, if it's a grade separation, the freeway's lower, then that's the best-case scenario because the, the sound kind of stays down and you have all kinds of mitigation.
Do we know if it's going to be an above the, is it the elevation going to be higher for the freeway or lower? Do we even know that?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I, so, ADOT loves to get out early and identify corridors, alignments. And, and I think that's where they are in the stage. If, if you think about what's happening on the South Mountain Freeway, the exact drainage and alignment probably wasn't set in certain areas, and I only know this just because we had landowners who, who owned land in that area, probably two years out from dirt being turned. They went out there, they surveyed, you know, so they got to get state funding, federal funding, to hire the engineers to survey the land. to hire the engineers to survey the land first, to figure out where the grade. And then to survey kind of, do they need to, you know, go down and do retention basins, you know? So it's, it'll be a while before final design of the right-of-way. But since this is in early, A.D.O.T. grabs these plans and it's better planning for A.D.O.T. to be out there sort of ahead of the freeway so now they can sort of see what we're doing and go, okay, now we know what's expected in the area. Now we have a better idea of how to plan the right-of-way.
And my second concern was the smaller home sizes. And then I echo that in the past, is the smaller home sizes tend to be, you know, less attractive to some homeowners. And now we have a freeway, we have smaller home sizes, so I don't know if that is a recipe for success in terms of a long-term goal, but just saying that out loud.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner, here's the great thing about Goodyear. A lot of cities in the valley allow for the smaller lots and side yard setbacks. Not every city in the valley will also say, if you're going to do that, here's all the extra that you got to do. And so your city has a design guidelines that were adopted fairly recent. And we spent at least two meetings, maybe more, debating, negotiating on what of those design guidelines that city wanted to see applied in the instance that we go to the smaller lots. So you could go to Phoenix, you could go to Buckeye, you could go to Glendale and other areas, and you could get those small lots by right. There's no extra enhancements that's required. Goodyear has taken the next step, and I applaud your staff for doing that, for requiring, if you're going to choose that, you better bring something else to the table. And so I don't think, in our mind, it isn't just a smaller lots means a less attractive home or home buyer. I think it means we've got to do a little bit more to enhance the area, enhance that product, and attract that buyer.
Thank you.
How is parcel 2 connected with the rest of the parcels, with the freeway bisecting it?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, obviously it's not, you know? So Willis, or Rainbow Road will obviously, you know, cross the 303 there. And so just like any other property, it's under current ownership today. And so just like any other property where a freeway comes along and bisects it, parcel 2 is identified as something other than, you know, the single-family. We have to sort of see what the market's going to drive on that one. Unfortunately, if the freeway wasn't there, it would be much easier to take parcel 2 and meld it into the development and into the community. But we have to, because the right-of-way alignment exists, we have to acknowledge that. And we have to say parcel 2 is likely going to be out on its own. Let's not try to put single-family traditional homes on there today and plot and lot it out as if we think it's going to be connected because it's most likely not going to be connected.
So there's, okay, so if people in parcel 2 want to use any of the parks, they have to get, come out of their parcel, drive down the road and pull back into the master plan, correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, not necessarily. So there will be trail connections, probably a long Rainbow Road, just like there would be sidewalks, pedestrian thoroughfares. It depends on how everything gets aligned and how the A.D.O.T. freeway is constructed. But our intent and hope is to have a true master plan community where all of this is connected. Now, if they're going to go down to parcel 20 because their son has a soccer game at 6:00 P.M., yeah, they're likely to get in the car. Unfortunately, I do that sometimes even when it's down the street. But most likely, if they're wanting to get on a trail that's close by, you know, they can get on their biker and use the sidewalk. And the intent is for Rainbow Road to have pedestrian connections all the way through the development.
Okay, thank you.
Was there any thought to any underground tunnel-type situation or any bridge, you know? They could take a golf cart, safer for kids, even adults if they're bike-riding, et cetera, to be able to connect that parcel?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I think the challenge is when the freeway isn't there today, we don't know what kind of grade separation we're talking about. If the freeway was there today and we had an engineer to go out and say, okay, the freeway's 12 feet above, what would it cost to do a tunnel? I think I could answer that, but given that we're so premature on the grade level, it would be hard to make a promise or even state one way or the other.
Sure, just a comment to keep in mind, since it is early, when we find out that grade level and so forth, to think of these ideas to connect that parcel.
Absolutely, Madam Chair, Commissioners, great ideas.
Are you finished, Commissioner Kish?
I am.
Okay, on school districts, in the staff report, I talked about the high school district does not anticipate the need for an additional high school. Do you want to explain why?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner, so...
Thousand houses?
Yeah, so, I didn't know if he was raising his hand. So Shane in my office has spent countless meetings with Buckeye Union and the elementary school district to make sure that we understand what their needs are. And so the superintendent has a development agreement sitting on their desk that they're ready to send back to us that acknowledges their needs. And so we've spent a lot of time with them. And believe me, if, I have four kids in public school, if the high school needed a site or wanted a site, we would have heard about it and we would have probably programmed in there. I can tell you for certain, we've had so many meetings with them that that's, they're not going to ask for something that they don't need. They don't want the obligation of having a, you know, a 30-acre parcel that they can't build on or they can't get state funding to construct on if the student demand isn't there. So do I know their exact plan of where the high school is going to be? I don't. But I just know that we've had a number of communications with them and they've said, we're good.
Great.
And we're, you know, give us the dollar per rooftop and we're all good.
Yeah, so, and the next comment is the property owners continue to work with the school districts on a donation agreement. Could you give us the status of that donation agreement?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners, so Shane's going to yell at me if I get this wrong, but we were hoping to have it here tonight, we really were. It's that close, the draft agreement has been, the deal points have been, meaning the dollar amounts per rooftop, and the certain situations have all been agreed to. It has to be in a development agreement. And my understanding is the superintendent has it on their desk, ready to sign it and ready to send it back. There's no doubt in my mind that before we go to council, we'll have that in hand. We're hoping to have it here tonight for you.
Great. It is good to know that it's almost complete.
I assure you it is, thank you.
I think we're all set?
Great, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Any questions? We're going to close the public hearing. Are there any commission discussions? Can I have a motion to approve the Rainbow Project?
Point of order, Madam Chairman, if you can. So we have, there's five of you tonight. And so our bylaws indicate that it takes four affirmative votes for a motion regardless of what it is to pass. So I just wanted to make sure for your benefit and for the benefit of our citizens in the audience and our applicant, that everybody was aware of what the procedure was. So again, you all make a recommendation to the council. And whatever the motion is, it takes four votes for it to pass this evening.
I motion to approve case number 07-200-00023.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Point of order, aren't we supposed to have a discussion period after the motion?
Yes. Okay, so, hold on one second. So if we can do this, if, we'll backtrack just a little bit and reconsider. So Madam Chairman, there was a motion and a second on the motion. So now it's open for commission questions and consideration.
I thought you asked that.
I thought I did too.
Yeah, I thought she asked that, yeah.
Are there any commission discussions?
There you go.
My only point would be that, and I want to be consistent with this with previous things I've discussed, is my concern is the freeway running through two points of residential, three points of residential, the fact that it's cutting off residential section number two and then the smaller lot sizes. That's my only concern, that is the reason why I'm voting no.
Thank you, I wanted to hear what his thought was on that.
Okay, so should I take the...
Yeah, could you, we want to do a roll call vote, so Heather will read out the names.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Kish?
No.
Commissioner Keys?
Yes.
Commissioner Maloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Steiner?
Yes.
Thank you.
So just for clarity, the motion to recommend approval to council passed?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there any further business?
No, ma'am, thank you for agreeing to the special meeting. We appreciate your attendance and your thoughtfulness, and thank you for coming. We are going to close the meeting, and as I mentioned...
I'm sorry, I have one staff communication.
Oh, I'm sorry, Katie actually has something to say tonight. Katie, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Sorry, I have one staff communication. The November city council meetings were altered. Passed out to you was a calendar of meetings. And the second November council meeting was originally planned for November 19th, and that has been rescheduled to November 26th. Because of that, we're proposing moving the, well, holding the Planning and Zoning Commission on November 14th, which is our regularly scheduled time. The previous calendar we had given you had moved it up to November 7th so that we could make that November 19th council date. And so we can touch base with this, on this with you in a more formal matter at the next meeting. This just came up today. We just wanted to get you the revised calendar as soon as possible. So that would have the November meeting on November 14th, which, you know, the second Wednesday is our regularly scheduled meeting time.
Thank you. So what we'll do now is close the meeting, as we adjourn the meeting as we normally would. And then we have, as I mentioned before, our, we're migrating to technology for all of our citizens and interested parties here. So we're going to be eliminating the paper copies that we give you at the meeting and we have iPads to deploy to you. So I'll walk you through that a little bit after the meeting. There'll be no action or consideration of anything and a little ethics form to review and to sign about city procedures and policies with electronic devices.
Mr. Baker, may I be heard before you close the meeting?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to compliment both Karen and staff and the applicant. I thought the presentation, both in writing and here tonight, was particularly well-done in terms of its tone and its content, and I appreciate that, thank you.
So with that, Madam Commissioner, if you...
There is no further business to discuss, this meeting is adjourned.